All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining the November 10th Common Council meeting. Please call the roll, Chris.
Ashel?
Aye.
Ford?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Rosie?
Here.
Mugerauer?
Here.
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Paul Mary?
Here.
Present seven.
All right. Councilmember Ashel, would you lead us in an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent. I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of America and to the public for which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so tonight, we'll start off then with citizen's statements to council. These are the general statements. Pam, do we have anyone registered for general citizen's statements to council?
No, we do not.
All right, then, moving on to public comments on agenda items. Do we have anyone registered to speak on an agenda item?
Yes, we do. Mary Ann Mueller, 448 Algoma Boulevard, for item number six.
Mary Ann, are you here with us?
Thank
And go ahead and unmute.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much. Um, I just wanted to review, um, our request, the county's request, to approve a conditional use permit amendment to allow an institutional residential use. As the council may recall, a couple, a couple of years ago, we had requested, uh, permission to put a trailer on county-owned property. Uh, the common council was kind enough to grant that request, but indicated that there could only be two bedrooms in the unit and only one resident. Um, currently, given the situation with 980, um, we are being told that there are a number of Winnebago County residents who are basically in the wings waiting to be released. Um, and we are basically asking the county or the, um, common council to give an amendment so that we can have another occupant, uh, in the trailer. As I had indicated, there are already two bedrooms in the trailer. Uh, one occupant is in one bedroom, but there is an empty bedroom. And so we are basically asking to use that second bedroom. Um, the proposed use, as I've indicated, has already been established on site. It's an appropriate location because it is, um, based on surrounding, uh, county government land. And we are not changing, uh, the only change is basically adding a resident to the mobile home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. And we have no others registered. Is that correct, PM?
It is correct.
All right, so we will move on then to consent agenda. Are there, uh, any, um, folks registered to speak on consent? No, because we would have already done that. So I'll need a motion and a second for consent.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Mugerauer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, my question is for, um, uh, the sheriff's office, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch your, I think it was Mary.
Mary Ann.
Mary Ann, thank you very much. I appreciate you guys, uh, being on the call and being able to answer any questions. There probably isn't too many, but you indicated that, that there may be more, uh, individuals down the pipeline that Winnebago County may be responsible for, for housing, uh, near-term and probably long-term. Is there a long-term solution that works at the county level? And I'm not asking you to divulge anything, but is there a longer-term solution other than, than a mobile home on, on the county property there or, or something bigger that we can expect for, for those individuals?
I could tell you that we have been tasked by the Judiciary Committee of Winnebago County to try to come up with solutions to this. Um, because basically because of Act 184, the county is now responsible for housing 980, uh, sex offenders who were basically residents, um, of let's say Winnebago County at the time of the crime. And as the council may recall, with this legislation, uh, came a requirement that, um, there has to be a certain buffer zone from nursing homes, from childcare operations, from schools, from parks and the like. Um, and it makes it very difficult. So, uh, Mike Elder, who is also here, he is the Facilities Director for Winnebago County, and the sheriff and I have been trying to come together to try to come up with a proposal, but right now, um, given the fact that there is one unit or one bedroom that is available, given the fact that at the time we came to the council two years ago, the state's position was that, um, they were very hesitant to have more than one person in a unit. That has since changed. Um, so given the fact, as I indicated, that there are a number of Winnebago County residents at Sandridge, which is the institution that houses 980 offenders, we are trying to be proactive. Um, so I don't know if I totally answered your question, but that's basically where we stand.
Appreciate it. You, you answered it, I think, as well as you probably could have.
We are trying to look at a long-term plan, but right now we're just trying to get that, uh, second occupant in that trailer.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Other council members, anything further on that? Thank you. Any discussion on consent agenda? Any further items on consent for discussion? Please take the roll.
Ashel?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Rosie?
Aye.
Mugerauer?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Here at seven.
All right, then, moving on to new ordinances. Um, item number 15, ordinance 20 dash four forty-eight. Uh, there will be no, uh, action taken on this. Uh, a lot be voted on tonight. Amend ordinance pertaining to enforcement of parking restrictions. Uh, let's see here. Since there's no action, do we, uh, have any questions on this parking enforcement restriction ordinance?
Madam Mayor, I will point out that in your orange folder, your virtual orange folder, you received a revised memo, uh, to clarify, uh, one of the items, but, uh, we, we had failed to put this memo in your original packet, so we wanted you to make sure you had it for tonight.
All right, I see, uh, councilmember Ford would like to speak?
Um, yes, just a quick question for city staff, and really more just so the public knows that this ordinance, if my understanding is correct, is mostly catching up our, um, order, our statutes with current practice. Is that correct?
Uh, I'm gonna have city attorney Lawrence and, uh, maybe speak to some of the catching up.
It, it really does kind of three things. It would shorten the time for the collection process. It's going to amend the, some of the fees and penalties. And then there's some clarification or readability and, um, we had a, a section that kind of repeated itself, and so we did some cleanup as well, but, but it also shortens the time for the collection process and does amend some of the fees and penalties.
Thank you.
And yes, um, the, uh, reduction from 60 days to 30 days, uh, for collection, as I understand it, and looks like, um, some increases to late fees and administrative fees with regard to suspensions. So, any other council, council members have anything on this item? All right, then, we will move on to new resolutions. Resolution 20 dash four forty-nine, adopt the 2021 annual operating budget and establish the property tax levy for the city of Oshkosh. Take a motion and a second on 2449.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, happy to get us started. I just, I want to point out a couple of things. Um, first, that this budget holds the tax levy, um, below 3%, which I think is pretty important, uh, given the financial stress so many individuals are feeling right now in our community. And I think it's really cool that this is something at our budget workshop that the, uh, entire council was on the same page on. Uh, I think that really, I don't know, gives me reason to have a lot of confidence in this group. Um, secondly, I want to point out that our, uh, tax levy for debt service is going down by 7.84%. So if you look at this, um, it's kind of the city's mortgage payment. What, what that does is it frees up more of, uh, our tax dollars to fund core services. Um, and we got here through, you know, good management by city staff, including some, um, aggressive refinancing of debt. Uh, good planning by the Long Range Finance Committee and some of that policy work, but then also the, uh, direction and vision of previous councils. So I just want to point all that out because all those groups deserve, uh, deserve praise. It's not an unsubstantial thing.
Other council members? Councilmember Mugerauer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And then councilmember Allison Osby?
Um, and, and my, uh, my statement's really more of a, a thank you to city staff, starting with City Manager Roloff, Finance Director Van Gombe, and obviously the, the full finance department and, and really all the department heads. I appreciate the, the document that you guys presented to us, the work that was put into it. You guys worked hard. Um, I'm comfortable voting in favor of, of the budget right now. It's, it, as councilmember Ford mentioned, it stays within the, the guidelines and the boundaries that we gave you in terms of, uh, levy limit and new debt. And, um, the city is getting a good value for, for their dollars in the 2021, um, uh, budget. So I just wanted to say thank you to, to everyone who worked on it. Um, it starts early in the year. It's a long process. But thank you for all the efforts.
Councilmember Allison Osby?
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to make that comment as well because, you know, obviously this evening, we have everything laid out in front of us. Staff has been extremely committed in working with the budget along with the council members as well. And so, you know, what may seem as, uh, a very seamless process this evening certainly was well thought out, given that we started discussions back in July. So again, thank you to everybody, council members included.
A lot of pre-work went into this, and, uh, some of the newer council members, uh, may not have realized it until you actually went through it. Uh, it's quite a bit of time commitment, so appreciate all the, um, attendance and all the input and engagement in this process and bringing forth community members' concerns and ideas with regard to this, and certainly staff, uh, yeah, staff, staff has put in a great deal of work to improve this every year. It seems like, uh, the process does improve, um, the numbers. And maybe the, uh, uh, shared revenues aren't improving so much, but certainly the process, uh, here in Oshkosh, uh, went off without a hitch. And, um, yeah, I do appreciate it. All right, well, let's take the roll on the levy. Clark, can you, can you unmute?
Sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Rosie?
Aye.
Mugerauer?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Here at seven.
And the next item under new resolutions is 20 dash four fifty, approve the financing of the 2021 capital improvement projects. Will take a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And discussion. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, so, um, I pointed out earlier some of the progress we've made on our, our debt service, and I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that if you look at our, our CIP, um, our debt looks pretty good now, but we have a significant increase in debt revenues for 2022 and 2023. So we have some time ahead of that, but I think it's just important to point out to the rest of the council and to the, uh, the public that we're going to probably have to make some difficult decisions over the, uh, next couple of years, uh, regarding that.
Thank you for that. Other council members on the CIP, the capital improvement program? All right, please take the roll.
Ashel?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Osby? Allison Osby?
Aye.
Rosie?
Aye.
Mugerauer?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Here at seven.
All right, next we have a few items for council discussion and direction to city manager and future agenda items. Uh, it looks like, um, future agenda items include presentation on the overdose fatality review team report for December 8th. And some dates for the city manager review. Um, so we're all good with December 8th on that presentation?
Probably councilmember Erickson, uh, I think she, the mayor and councilmember Erickson were the ones who approached on this. But it seems like that's the, the most favorable date. Is that correct?
Yeah, yep, I was able to confirm with him, um, when they reached out to me, December 8th works.
And that would be, is that, um, Ms. Gilderband presenting?
Yep, and, uh, Jennifer Skolasky, too.
And Jennifer Skolasky, all right. And the, uh, dates for city manager review, Deputy Mayor Krause, uh, remind us of those dates, please.
Um, the dates will be November 16th and November 30th. They're Mondays at 5:30, and we'll be doing those in person. There was interest in getting together to do those because of the importance of the meetings and the meaning behind them. Um, and look forward to have everybody being able to attend. Thank you.
All right, so that's, uh, the 16th and the 30th, 5:30. Uh, it looks like we have a future workshop listed here, city manager?
Yeah, we, we have it there, uh, just for the future. There were, uh, a couple that I wanted to, uh, point out to you. Uh, we, um, made some changes to our website based on some of the input that council members had provided us with the survey that we did. Um, Mr. Newman, I think, is going to reach out to council members who had specific requests. Um, but in addition, I, I'd like to offer if you would like a presentation for Mr. Newman. Since we're doing our meetings virtually, Mr. Newman is present at these meetings, so, uh, I, I think Tony's listening in. He'd be happy to, to make a presentation, just kind of walk you through a few things. We got some really good suggestions. Um, uh, for those of you who made specific recommendations, Tony's probably going to reach out to you individually to go through those specifically. But then, if you'd like, we can do a presentation for the whole group. Um, we would probably look at that for, uh, the 24th, the next meeting, if that's what you're amenable to.
I'm sorry, what was the date?
Uh, the next meeting, the 24th.
The 24th?
Yeah. A lot of it's with the, the laser fish, the search function. That was probably the biggest comment we got from, uh, general, uh, council. And Tony's got some things he wants to show you, uh, and we'd, we'd like your feedback on that.
All right, very good. And, and, um, I guess a couple of, uh, requests, I guess, for some future agenda items I'm interested in hearing, uh, from other council members. It's been quite a while since we had a joint meeting. We used to have them, uh, more regularly with the school district. I was, um, uh, city manager Roloff and I attended the community sounding board this morning and, uh, would like to know if council is interested in a January meeting to reconvene with the school districts. Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
All right, councilmember Mugerauer?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, meeting with, with our other community stakeholders, you know, the school district as well as legislators is important. Um, I think our, some of our problems in the past, we're finding topics of discussion sometimes, as well as agreeing on the topics between the two entities. So as long as it's a fruitful and meaningful meeting that's, that's planned in advance, of course. Um, I think we'd all probably enjoy sitting meeting with them. It's just a matter of the topics of discussion, so.
All right. And also, um, councilmember Mugerauer, uh, was it your thought that the, uh, special assessment discussion might be on a future agenda item as well? This, yet this year?
I think we were waiting for some more information. That's what council had decided. Um, not up to me to, to decide when we have that one, but if, if staff was prepared to present uh, the information council had requested, um, I don't know that we're going to be able to have it, looking at the calendar anymore in 2020, might be a a little tricky. Um, but otherwise in 2021, early in the, in the new year, it'd be, might, might be prudent to, for what they have to say. I'll leave that to, to city manager Roloff to, to chime in as to when his staff is ready to, to give us info.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Where we had last left this was that we were awaiting some, uh, some work from the, um, uh, city of Janesville, which has been investigating the feasibility of a transportation fee. Um, I'm aware that that report is done. Uh, I've reviewed a draft copy of it, what I believe is a draft, might even be more than that. Um, they're, uh, it's, it's gonna sound familiar to some of you. They're gonna create a, a task force to look at it beginning in January. But they did the investigative side first. Um, RA Smith, which is a group that presented to the ad hoc committee, councilmember Mugerauer is familiar with. Um, and, uh, Ellers, the city's financial advisor, uh, they came together to put together a presentation for, uh, or a review for their council. Uh, so that is, uh, scheduled for a January workshop. I'd be happy to forward you the, uh, the report. It's a, it's basically a PowerPoint presentation. Happy to forward that to you. Um, but it'd probably be prudent to do something after the first of the year. Um, because, you know, we've got to get the process started with, uh, special assessments and everything. Um, the council did defer action on, uh, sending out bills this year. Uh, and given all the circumstances, the uncertainty made a lot of sense. Um, but at a certain point, we have to, we have to go out and, um, unfortunately, start collecting those. Um, but then, what do we do? What are the next steps? And, uh, if council wants to address that, we're certainly, uh, prepared to do so. Um, I think, uh, the approach that Janesville was looking at was similar to what Mr. Mazanik had presented to the committee. Uh, Mr. Mazanik's with RA Smith, the engineering firm, and it's a traffic-based, um, fee, uh, that's based on trips that come from the, uh, uniform traffic, uh, generation manual type of thing. So, um, happy to forward that to council, uh, and if it spurs any interest, we can certainly put it on an agenda for discussion, but it may be appropriate after the first of the year.
And I believe, uh, councilmember Mugerauer, uh, it was either you or perhaps councilmember Ford that had, um, mentioned in our last discussion about this, the possibility of looking at an extended schedule on the sidewalk replacement and rehabilitation. So perhaps that could be part of that discussion as well. If, if council's willing.
Yeah, no, I remember bringing that up as a, um, even an item during this budget process in terms of a way to, um, reduce some of the, the debt and some of the expense, the 2021 budget under the CIP, but, um, yeah, didn't, you know, the, that conversation didn't go where, very, very far, I think, with, with, uh, staff or, or with council. Um, but it's definitely prudent to be a, be a part of whatever conversation we have, since it's a large chunk of that special assessments.
Yes. All right, and then just, um, I guess, kind of as a heads up, then, uh, city manager, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about, um, our discussion this morning about the potential mask ordinance, um, yet this month.
Well, I am, uh, actively tracking, uh, a report that Governor Evers was scheduled, uh, to, uh, make us an address at 6:05 PM. And I literally, uh, heard my computer beep a moment ago with something from Mr. DeShane at the league, so, uh, there's a, uh, it looks like there's a signed executive order today urging people to stay home as much as possible. Uh, but the order included no new directives limiting business activity or travel. Um, so I, I, I'm gonna have to look at it a little more, so I don't have, I thought maybe there'd be something, uh, the possibility of a mask order. It doesn't look like it is, uh, being extended to my knowledge. So, but I think we need to look at that. City attorney's gonna need to look at the governor's order and see what applicability we have. Um, but the governor's order is due to expire on, uh, the 21st. So the mayor and I discussed, we talked a lot of, a lot of different scenarios. Um, it, it may be appropriate, uh, to put it on the next agenda. That would be the 24th. It's a couple of days afterwards, but you know, hopefully, uh, the commitment of people to, uh, to wear masks goes well beyond, uh, uh, governor's orders. And, uh, and if we need to take up the issue, if it's appropriate, if the council wants to do it, um, uh, the council's direction was to put it back on the agenda, and I think it would, it would be appropriate to do that for at least the discussion, uh, the pros and cons of that. So, uh, it'd be my intent to put it on the next agenda for council's consideration. If you felt differently, you could ask for a special meeting, uh, the next week, late next week or something like that, before it expires. I, I certainly leave it up to council's, uh, discretion to do, uh, to do that and give us some direction on that.
And I think that then brings us to a question of whether or not we will have December 22nd as a council meeting. Historically, uh, the holiday week had not been. However, this is earlier in the week. And if we do not have a council meeting, uh, in December 22nd, there's the potential that we will have a very heavy agenda, that first one in January, looking for, um, council's desire as to December 22nd for a meeting. Councilmember Mugerauer?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think historically, uh, that meeting that week has always been, um, canceled or not held. It's appropriate to do the same this year. Um, I don't think it, it shouldn't change the workload too much comparative to previous years, but, um, I think in, in terms of, especially in 2020 with staff, uh, and I know I'm gonna get blasted for this statement a little bit, but with staff's, uh, vacation positions, they may be, uh, looking to, um, to use that in the later part of 2020 here, in the later parts of December, and allowing them to do so without having to report for a council meeting might be prudent. Um, but I don't see the need for us to, to hold that meeting. Normally, we wouldn't, so I'm in support of not.
Well, we have also had them, uh, as a noon meeting. Uh, city manager, do you have any, um, thought as to what could even go through, um, on that meeting? I'm, I'm assuming it would be primarily things from Plan Commission, but is there anything on the horizon that would be delayed, um, uh, if we held off till January?
I don't have any immediate items that I think are going, uh, urgent issues that I'm aware of. Um, you know, the, the big urgent things we've been talking about have been things related to the pandemic. Um, it's just that, as you, as the mayor said, it'll be a five-week interval because there's a It's just that, as you, as the mayor said, it'll be a five week interval because there's a fifth Tuesday in December. So it'll be, uh. The last meeting, uh, if we don't do the 22nd would be December 8th. The following meeting would be January 12th. So. Full 34, 35 days would be there. Um, typically it's, um. A, a lot of consent stuff, a lot of year end, uh, or new year purchases. Uh, if, uh. You know, council can authorize one, now that the budget's been adopted, we can start planning and doing bidding. Uh, and some of the items we start in January and we do it. And if we had a meeting in December, we'd get those approved in December. Otherwise we'd wait until January for that, um, because it's a little later. Um, you know, we would delay getting some of those things. So that's really the reason you do it. Um, we could do it at six o'clock. It's gonna be virtual anyway. So we could do it at noon or six o'clock. Um, it would keep, as the mayor suggested, uh, it would probably keep from a very voluminous. Uh. Consent, uh, agenda on the 12th because there would be such a gap. I mean. Even with December 22nd, there's still gonna be a three week gap and a lot of beginning of the year stuff. Sometimes we clear that out, uh, if we have this meeting. Um, so, you know, Stan, I appreciate Councilmember Mookerhour's, uh, uh, consideration of the dilemma that some of our staff. It's a very real issue because people and there's a lot of vacation, uh, that's, uh, not been taken, uh, this year. Particularly amongst the, the management and supervisory staff. So, um, I don't know what the vacation plans are. Uh, but whatever council decides, we will, uh, we will be there, uh, for whatever day or time, uh, you choose or not choose.
Councilmember Castle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I think I can go both ways on this. Um, but if we were to actually have a meeting, I prefer to have it at noon. Um, to go along the lines with, um, with Mr. Mookerhour's comments about. Uh, being, um, considerate of, of staff timing and needs and vacation as well. I, I, I feel that a noon meeting, uh, would be earlier in the day and, and would also help them be able to manage that if they wanted to. Uh, plan their vacation to be, uh, take place after that meeting, uh, that might be, uh, reasonable as well. But I can go both ways. On this, um, I see merits of both, but my feeling is that if we do have a meeting, let's, let's do it earlier in the day.
Councilmember Allison Aspey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so I've been at this for a little while and I do not believe in a decade that. We have ever had a second meeting in December. Um, and for some of the reasons that we've talked about, um, it is time for. It is, there are staff, a number of staff that have in the past, um, taking vacation during then as well as finishing up projects. So I'm more in favor of continuing, um, to have our, our last meeting be the beginning of December. And then continue on January 12th.
Other councilmembers, Deputy Mayor Prossy.
Thank you. Um, I would be in favor of not having the second meeting in December either. And this will be my fourth year on council and we haven't had one and we haven't had a noon meeting either. And I wouldn't be able to attend that because I would still be at work. So I would be in favor of not having a meeting. And city manager stated, there's nothing on the horizon that's of immediate concern. So. I don't see the need for it if it's past practice.
Councilmember Erickson.
Thanks. Um, I'll just say as a newbie, I'm fine either way too. So, doesn't matter.
All right then. Uh, if there's no other comments, then December 8th will be our last. Uh, council meeting for 2020. Let's hope 2020, uh, 2021 is a bit more promising. City Manager.
Uh, just the reason we had this for, uh, discussion and direction is council will need to adopt a, an ordinance. To cancel the meeting on December 22nd. Uh, it'll be two readings. So we'll have it on the, uh, November 24th and December 8th meeting. So. You'll see that on the next agenda.
All right, very good. Then, uh, next is, uh, report of council liaison for boards and commissions. Are there any reports? Councilmember Ford.
Um, yeah, plan commission did meet, but really the most exciting thing we talked about was the, uh, item on the consent agenda, um, for the county housing discussed tonight.
Any others? Councilmember Mookerhour.
If it's all right, I've got two things I wanna have under statements here, but it's not a, it's not an update. So if. Other council members want to give a board and commission update first before I do that, that'd be prudent.
All right, Count, uh, Deputy Mayor Prossy.
Thank you. Uh, we had traffic and parking advisory tonight and we had two items on the agenda. The first was the, um. Discussion on the Jackson Street corridor plan and safety study. And, um, consultant's recommendation, there was three proposals, the. One that the consultant suggested was two A, which was the full redesign of Jackson. From Church Ave to Murdoch Ave and, um, the board was split on the recommendation. It, it was three, two in support of two A. The full re, full redesign. Um, and the reasons were the pros would impact the deficiency of Jackson Street currently, which are. Cars driving too fast, um. Adding turn lanes and snow removal and it had neighborhood support. For the full redesign. And then the second item was the South Main Street, street restriping. That was discussed in council. Um, there's a study being completed in the next month or so. And if it's a positive, it will go ahead and restripe it in the spring to early summer to one lane and parking up and down Main Street. From South Main, from Eighth Ave to South Park. That's all I have.
All right then, I don't see others. Um, just a couple of items, uh. The Parks Advisory Board, uh, met last night. And that was the first meeting in a couple of months. Um, the gist of that, uh, related to. The, um, a little bit more detail still in, in high level concept, but a little more detail. With regard to Lake Shore Park Phase One and, um, the, the schedule for that. Um, was a good, was a good discussion, uh, presentation by the consultant. And look for, um, public participation and more detail to come in after the first of the year. Uh, that's about it for parks. Um, and then for diversity, equity and inclusion. The, um. University invited. Me to invite a couple of folks from the, the DEI, uh, committee on Monday, or I'm sorry. For last Friday and, um, it was for a roundtable discussion. Which followed the press conference and we had that roundtable discussion with several students from UW Oshkosh. Um, uh, Pastor Butler, Pastor Sean Butler, uh, from the Black Faith Community and then. Mi Yang and Ashley Hess from DEI. We met with, uh, Tommy Thompson as well as Surgeon General. Um, Jerome Adams and it was a very fruitful discussion. They were looking for input on building confidence. Um, within our, uh, minority communities regarding, uh, not just COVID testing. And of course that was following the release of the information on the rapid testing, but also in discussions about, uh, vaccine confidence. So. Um, they were very honored and gave a very thoughtful discussion and input to that. Um, so I was very. Grateful that the university invited us to the table there and that we have the framework with which to, um, offer. That to the surgeon general. And that is all I have. Councilmember Mookerhour, you had a couple of statements.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the first one, actually I've, so two things. One is about the election last Tuesday and, um. The second is regarding our, uh, busing agreement with Yashayi School District. So first, um. I, I want to give a little stats, a little, a little information regarding last Tuesday's election here in the city of Oshkosh. Got this information from the, the city clerk. So I appreciate Ms. Ubrich's passing along this information. Um. Over 32,000 people voted in the city of Oshkosh last week, Tuesday in the November primary, uh, the November general, excuse me, and, uh. City Clerk's office mailed out over 16,000 absentee ballots. For that, uh, for that election. Over nearly 4,000 people voted in person early at city hall in the two weeks prior of the election. And. Let me just pull up here. In regards to how quickly, uh, numbers started being transmitted, this is, this is what impresses me, I think, the most about. Uh, the clerk's office and, and how they manage our elections. By eight fifteen, the first numbers were transmitted from a polling location. And by eight forty seven. All but one district had reported in their, their final numbers. So within 47 minutes of closing the polls, we had, um. Uh, I believe it was 14 of the 15 or, excuse me, 15 of the 16. Uh, districts had reported their final numbers in. I think that's incredible, especially in terms of. Some of the things we saw, uh, in the media just this last week and in terms of how long some elections take in, in different communities and different states. I wanted to point out how well and how efficient things are being run here in our clerk's office and with our elections here. I know in communication with, uh, Ms. Ubrich. She expressed her, uh, how proud she was of her staff. I wanted to express that same thing, how, how proud I am of, of our, uh, city clerk's office. Uh, herself, Angie, uh, the full election staff. And all of the roughly 260 individuals that helped make sure an election could take place safely and efficiently. And properly on, on election day. And that included, uh, 30 high school students that were part of that process as well. So I think that's pretty cool that. Um, you know, one, the high school students are still, uh, trying to, to find ways to give back to their community and help us. And. Uh, so I wanted to pass my kudos along. I think, I think council probably would be in agreement that. We're, uh, we're impressed with your efficiency, Pam, and, and how things worked in this election. So thank you for a job. Very well done. And then two, uh, just to give council a, a brief update, you're gonna see more, I think, at the next council meeting. Um. Regarding our agreement with Yashayi School District, our busing agreement. Um. Since this isn't really a, for up for discussion this evening, I wanted to at least give you guys a heads up. Um. Uh, I reached out to, to Vicky Cartwright, the superintendent and had a discussion as well with the city manager, uh, regarding our agreement. And, uh, obviously 2020, especially for the school year, has been a very interesting fall and it will look like to be a very interesting spring. And our agreement isn't really doing its job, uh, how we, how we originally wrote it, uh, as a two-year agreement. So I think there might be some validity and having a discussion about trying to extend that to a three-year deal. Uh, there's gonna be more information, uh, it's positive. Um, but I wanted to give everyone here a heads up that, uh, the school district finance team is gonna talk about it, I think. On, or their finance, uh, committee is gonna talk about it Thursday evening a little bit. And then at our next meeting, eh, the, what, November, the, the 24th, uh, I think we're gonna have a discussion, um, regarding it as well. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mookerhour. And. Let's see here. Do we have any other council statements? All right then, we will move on to city manager announcements and statements. City Manager Roloff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, in your agenda packet, there's a memo regarding, uh, light, uh, duty pickup truck for the Parks Department, uh. That was budgeted. We did a cooperative purchase on that one. Uh, we have the third quarter strategic plan update, which the council. Had received, uh, in a packet. I just want to briefly go through it and certainly happy to answer any questions. Uh, this is sort of the home stretch on a, on the two-year strategic plan. This is, uh, the third of, uh, third quarter of 2020. So we have one quarter to go. And you can see that, you know, we are on track with many of the items. I think it's appropriate to point out some of the areas where we're a little behind. A lot of it's COVID related. Uh, others are some conscious decisions that were made, uh, in the past that. That kind of, uh, tapped the brakes a little bit on some progress. Um. For the ones I would point out, uh, if you look at page three of the, uh, document that you received that said, uh, the 2019, 2020 strategic plan update. Uh, Ms., uh, Courtney Jenks and Ms. Diane Moran, my executive assistant, um, we're trans, uh, transitioning. That Diane's gonna be doing, uh, this reporting, uh, just doing some internal, uh, movement, uh, so, uh. Diana, you'll be seeing Diane give these reports in the future. Uh, strategic goal two on page three shows two disruptions. Those are specifically related to, uh, outreach efforts by the fire department, which with the COVID, um. Uh, pandemic, we aren't doing those as much as we used to, uh, whether it's national night out or meeting with neighborhood groups. So that's why you have the major disruption there. We will not accomplish that this year, uh, and we probably won't be accomplishing it the first. Quarter or two perhaps of 2021 and stay tuned. Uh, so that's probably one of them. Strategic goal five was another area where there's, uh, been some delay. Uh. Actually, I want to go back to strategic goal four. There was some disruption, not major disruption. And that has to do with our I and I program, our inflow and infiltration. We've been focusing on the public side because it's an area that we can control. Uh, we budget a million dollars a year for that program. So. We have a great deal of control over that. Um, the real issue that we're going to need to work on. Particularly as we get into our next strategic plan is we're gonna have to discuss the policy side. Of private, uh, side repairs. Um, you know, we've got this program for lead pipes, which are, which are clearly a health and safety issue. Um, the I and I is a, certainly a safety issue, uh, potential flooding and things like that. Um, but it is a little more, uh. A little more us, uh, dictating some rules and everything. Uh, and it's gonna have to be a council decision to assist us in that. Meanwhile, we're trying to get our, our house in order on the public side. So that when we get to the point where we're gonna be talking to the residents, it's like, we've done this, but to truly get, um. Uh, a handle on our inflow and infiltration problem, we need both public and private side. And James, you know, it might be a good idea because, uh, since the last time we circulated that, that graphic that you had put together or that you had, uh. Uh, identified, there's a great graphic that shows all these sources of inflow and infiltration. Uh, and it really gives you a perspective on how big this issue is. And that's, uh, that's what the strategic goal, that's why there's a little delay there. We're gonna have to address it, uh, uh, over the next strategic planning program. Uh, strategic goal five, uh, there are some major disruptions there, uh, specifically has to do with the museum because. Of, uh, funding issues, um, uh, limitations on what we can do with some of our improvements, uh, the design for the, uh, sports and recreation. Uh. Uh, exhibit at the museum is gonna be taken in-house. They're not gonna contract out the safe funds. Uh, but it's gonna be delayed and that's the major disruption there. Otherwise, uh, making very good progress, even ones that. Don't show completed. A lot of those goals are sort of ongoing types of things that we do. So. To say we're accomplished wouldn't be fair to say, but are we on track? Yes, we're, we're continuing to do that. So. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I, I certainly can, uh. I can answer some more questions if you have any. Mr. Fitzpatrick, uh, and I were briefed by. Uh, our staff last week on this. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember Mookerhour. You're muted.
Sorry. Thank you. Hit the button twice there. Um. City Manager Roloff, you know, going through the KPIs and the strategic plan update, um, you know, I'm seeing, uh, nearly every department's reported. 2020 numbers, one quarter, two quarter, three or year-to-date numbers, um, even with, you know, extreme drops in. Whether it's attendance at functions, you know, parks or museum, whatever it is. And, uh, then I see a bunch of blank space underneath the library. Is it common that we should be seeing basically an asterisk saying, we'll get it to you at the, after the first of the year and. Instead they're not reporting even attendance or, um, you know, library card usage. Is it common that that's how it's gonna get reported to us?
Uh, that's typically, the, the KPIs admittedly are probably, you know, relatively new from our standpoint, but. Typically the library fills it in at the end of the year. They have not typically done it over the course of the year. Um, as they're, the KPIs that they have there are. Uh, only annual, uh. Uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick's on the line. I'm not sure if you have any more information about the library's, uh, KPIs.
I don't really have anything to add.
I don't really have anything to add.
So the only reason I ask is, I mean, we're seeing museums attendance, you know, comparative. You know, just it's a question I have. So thank you.
That's all I have regarding the strategic plan. Regarding the outstanding issues, give me a second. I'm, I'm moving from screen to screen here. Regarding the outstanding issues, happy to answer any questions. Staff, with respect to the transitional housing, particularly on Jefferson Street, staff is currently looking into zoning changes that are possible. They wouldn't specifically address 1105 because they are grandfathered in. And because our current new zoning requirements are actually more restrictive than what they are allowed to do, the likelihood of them moving into a more restrictive place is probably not likely. But you did hear from the Department of Corrections that in the future, they might be looking at another facility in Oshkosh. I have not been made aware of any inquiries that they've made with planning or police or anything. So nothing is immediate. So I would prefer staff to keep looking at what's out there that we might be able to apply and bring back to council. I, I heard loud and clear that council would like to see some changes to our zoning code. And, and we're looking at that. And then after planning does their research on the planning side, then the city attorney will look at it from the legal standpoint because there's been a lot of recent decisions and court cases and things like that. As you heard earlier, even with the section 980, which it doesn't apply here, but there's a lot of new rules and judgments that are coming down because communities are wrestling with that. So anything we bring forward to council, we want to make sure is the most recent, the most defensible. And so we're going to continue to do that. If we sense that there's anything imminent, we're probably going to bring it and give you as fresh a perspective as we can. But for now, we're going to continue to keep looking at that. And that's all I have there unless there are any other questions regarding anything in the outstanding issue section. Otherwise, Chief Stanley is not available tonight with COVID-19. We've talked a lot about it during some of the discussions. I did look at Governor Eager's order. There's not a lot added. It's more advisory than it is restrictive. So I think that leans towards, you know, bringing a discussion at the November 24th meeting. The numbers continue to at, at, at least plateau at a high number. I have not seen the number drop on the one-week average that we get from the county health department. Our staff tracks even two weeks of data. That number is still maintaining a high plateau. And that's obviously a concern. We are continued to close here at city hall for face-to-face interactions through the 20th of November. And I'm going to be evaluating that next week and make a decision very early so that we, we keep the public informed. I'm very pleased that in our, if you take a look at our website, we've added a feature called online services. The public has been very receptive to those things. We're getting a lot of things processed that way. I know that's not ideal, but it's certainly our effort to minimize exposure. We, we've had to quarantine a lot of people. We've had a little bit of spike here. It's evened off here at city hall, which, which is very good. I wish the same can be said for the rest of our community, but, you know, we're doing okay, but I think it's taken these measures. I have to send my kudos out to Amy Albright. I refer along with councilmembers Ford and Allison Osby, put together a lot of that information. The Oshkosh Herald this week is going to have a great spread, doing the promotion. And with the governor's order on masks expiring and not looking like it's going to extend, it's got to be about people choosing to do the right thing. And so I think that the, the efforts that we're doing are very positive. Hopefully you all got your, your love Oshkosh masks that we've been passing around. Thanks to Ford Imprint for, for making 1,000 of these that we've distributed. It's really more, lots of people have masks, but we're trying to just promote as much as possible for people to do the smart, right thing. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions if I, if I missed anything that you're, you'd like to inquire about relative to that.
Just want to, Mr. Roloff, do you want to share any detail in relation, kind of touching on that to the surge site and the rapid tests available? I guess just, you know, I, I really appreciate all the work that councilmembers Ford and Allison Osby did along with Amy Albright and others with regard to the messaging and this campaign. You know, just kind of following up with that, you know, given that we've been given this gift of this rapid test site, which is limited in scope, from what I understand, it's like six or so weeks. To be able to go to doimeadacovidtest.com and register for that, it's 15 minutes. So, you know, that, that makes things convenient for people and it's right at the Culver Welcome Center. They're encouraging especially, you know, K through 12 families and, and children and staff along with first responders, but it is open to anyone, whether you have symptoms or you don't have symptoms. And many have already started to avail themselves of that resource. I believe there's a max of 800 a day that they can handle.
Mayor, I couldn't have said it better myself. I will tell you that I'm taking a few days off. So I decided to go over there and get my, get my test, schedule it for 4:10. I left the office at 4 o'clock. I was back in the office by 4:15. By 4:27, I'm negative. So cool. Within 27 minutes from the time I left here, I got the answer. So it was not crowded. Those 800 tests, they can handle the crowd. It was very efficient. I was very, very impressed. The sign up was really easy from the do I need a COVID test? The covid19test.com. It was very easy to sign up. So I would encourage anybody to, if you're looking to, to get some assurance that if you're concerned, it's the antigen test. It's the fast result one. But I, I will, I will give my, my badge of approval because I thought it was a very efficient test and they're very accommodating over there. So.
You do the swab yourself. They, they open up the card. You do the swab yourself. They put the reagent or whatever the reaction piece is in the card and then it stays in a secure room. Did I see a hand up by either councilmember Allison Osby? Okay.
Madam Mayor, I just had a question regarding that testing site. So is that strictly for city of Oshkosh or Winnebago County residents or is that open to others as well?
That is open to anyone, yes. And there, there were over 250,000 of these tests sent that are distributed throughout the UW system, but it is for anyone in the community or coming in from outside the community.
The reason why I ask is apparently there were a couple of folks from Fond du Lac that had called. And when, I guess the response was, was that they were told that it was preferable that they used their own doctor and own facility in Winnebago County. So I was a little bit confused as to, and that was coming from somebody at the testing center.
Are you referring to Sunny View?
No.
Okay.
This was at the Culver Center.
Well, that's interesting because that's certainly not the information we were given.
Okay, I just, because I will certainly let them know, because they had reached out. I think they reached out to me because my first initial is A on the council list. So, so I will certainly get back in touch with them and, and let them know that it is available outside of the city of Oshkosh and Winnebago County residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, but my understanding is exactly as mayor. I would encourage people to do it there. When I signed up, there was nothing there that would have given me any indication that I couldn't participate if I wasn't a Winnebago County resident. And this is fed, this is federal money. So it's, it's for all of us. Excuse me, that's all I have there. I will, we, I also have my last item. Chief Stanley was nominated by, who we're going to be speaking with in a couple of weeks, Jennifer Skelasky, to the National Fallen Firefighter Foundation, sponsored by Maglight. Sorry for the commercial. They asked me to mention that. For leadership on the community-wide fall prevention program that he's been working on. And I apologize profusely to the council because I did not invite you. It was a surprise and I didn't want to do a public notice. That would have kind of blown the surprise. So, but we're very proud of Chief Stanley's efforts on fall prevention. And, and a national group felt it was appropriate to, to recognize Chief Stanley. I know there are some of our state reps who have indicated they found out about it and they're interested in doing something. So since the surprise is now out of the bag, should we have an event that I think some of the legislators want to do something? I will certainly let council know so you can attend, but we wanted to keep it a very small group. If you saw the Oshkosh Media Event, it, it was a pretty small event anyway. But I think we can notice it and, you know, accommodate as many council members in a, in a wide open area. So we'll make sure you come to this one and thanks for understanding that we, we kept it really on the QT. But it worked. He was very surprised. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. So I will consider, let's bring in a motion in a second on a motion to adjourn.
Soon moved.
Second.
And we'll take a roll call on this vote.
Heschel.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Crossy.
Aye.
Mookrour.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Eric, we are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.